We are all here. We will call the meeting to order at 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I will accept a motion to approve the minutes from November 4th.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 4th, subject to corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any corrections?
Yes. Believe it or not. Under Policy 5B, it looks like. Wait a minute, I gotta find the right one. Says VSBA Policy Manual lists so on and so forth that I noted we will begin reviewing the required and recommended policies and we are going to ask each board member to participate. And that's kind of on a volunteer basis versus a must. So, other than the committee members. So, I'm not sure just what you might want to put in there. I guess volunteer, ask each board member to volunteer if they'd like, or something of that nature.
Can make that change? Any other changes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from November 4th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Yeah, fair number of us. Okay. Public input and announcements. None. We'll move on to our committee business that we have to attend to. So first off, we have personnel. Go ahead.
Yes. I had sent out, and we had mentioned at the last Personnel Committee meeting, the committee approved the Superintendent Evaluation Tool. And then, after the meeting, I sent out to everyone a copy of that tool. And so, with the plan of approving it as a board tonight, to approve the Superintendent Evaluation Tool as presented.
I would move that we approve the evaluation tool as presented to us by email.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, BJ. Any discussion with regard to that? Anyone have any questions?
We will continue. David and I will begin working on a timeline of implementation. So, we're working on that. We've been working on that.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor of approving the Superintendent Evaluation Tool that was presented to us in email, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
And again, thanks, everyone who worked on that.
Thank you, Len, for all the work of BJ and Liz and everyone who contributed to that format.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Just for the group, that was a deliberate, thoughtful, well-articulated, and reasonable process of just trying to identify the right ways to measure things. The mindset of the group was how do we build something that will last for a prolonged period of time? And, you know, I think we're off to a really good start with that and looking forward to using it.
Thank you.
It was a very good process.
Yeah, it was. The next Personnel Meeting will be December 4th at 6:30.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And then, Andy, the numbers.
That's the numbers. So these are the pay orders and they are dated November 20th, 2019. As follows. Operating Account: $255,946.92. From the operating account, $10,456.36. After-school Fund: $821.68. Food Service Fund: $2,722.92. The total of this is $269,947.88. Then we have payroll, and they are as follows. First one's dated November 8th, 2019, for $607,382.33. Next one is also dated November 8th, 2019, $768.4. Then we have November 15th, 2019, Finally, a second one for November 15th, 2019, Total of these payrolls is $639,465.54. I move the pay orders and payrolls be approved as read.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
George and I sort of looked at them today together. It was, I was a little earlier than he was, so it was a little bit of a better shot at it. But I did have a couple of things that I looked at. One I asked about was something called Spelling City. I was trying to figure out what that would be. It's like you want to send the kids to a place somewhere and then they're going to learn spelling? Or you're going to have the city come to us? It ended up being something that the lower grades use on a computer program up on the Internet. And it does pretty good. It's inexpensive. It's $108. And hopefully, that's for a number of classrooms that we have. The second one was a little strange. I like the new format, what we have for pay orders, because it has a description of sort of what's in the package that's there. And one of the things I went down through was a number of times a word, the word "border." And then, I'm thinking maybe that's somebody that's staying in somebody's house, or somebody that's just coming across from Mexico. And then a little further down, that's how words "borderet." And I'm thinking, well, is this the gender of the kids involved that are getting this thing? And one's a "border" and one's a "borderet," so the girls. It ended up being something that was involved with the art division of schooling, what we do. And it's putting things together on paper. And George had a question about, one of the things that he was worried about.
I did indeed. There was an expenditure of $4,250 or something like that for some stuff from Apple. And so I asked about it and I was told by several voices, "Ask Brian." So Brian, what's the deal?
So that's replacing some teacher laptops. We had a couple of new hires additions, like the art program. We added some folks that needed some new ones and we had some old ones that were on their last slide that needed to be replaced too.
Well, in the art world, Apple computers are the things, I guess. Okay, well, thank you.
And one other thing too, I want to say that George and I are both the same way. If we have questions of what's out there for the money side or what it's going for, Stan and the financial people are more than willing to come over to us and help us, you know, know where things are, what thing's going to. And Brian also, he's there. It's really, it's really good to understand some of the things we're asking and they can tell us without a problem. Really good.
Yes.
Excellent. And I appreciate the fact that you two take the time to do that. That makes it a lot easier for all of us to remember back what it was like before with going to approve. This is a much more streamlined process, so that's good. So, all those in favor of approving the pay orders and payroll as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, Tammy, the next meeting of the Finance Committee will be Monday, the 25th, at 4:30. We'll be reviewing the first draft of the budget.
Excellent.
Is that here?
Yes.
In the conference room?
Yes, in the conference room. Thank you.
Okay. And then we move on to the Mill River High School presentation. Tyler.
Okay, so, we've got, actually, I apologize. We've got presentations.
Okay.
So, first thing I want to do, I invited two students here to come tonight. Unfortunately, I have to read some stats from my phone, so I'm not texting, I'm not looking at Facebook. Looking at some stats.
Sure.
So, actually, I asked Annika Hites and Brogan Giffen to come. Okay, if you want to stand up, so they, there you are. And then Brogan Giffen as well, but unfortunately, Brogan had to work tonight. But both Annika and Brogan are members of our cross-country running team. And they've both had some amazing results this year. I want to read those to you. So, for Annika, she repeated as a Southern Vermont League Individual Champion. She was third in the state. She qualified for New England's and finished 86 overall at New England's. So that's, again, all of the high school competitions for cross-country in the New England States. And then Brogan repeated as a Southern Vermont League Individual Champion. He was also an individual state champion. He qualified for New England's and finished 20th overall. And is currently attempting to qualify for Nationals, which is in Madison, Wisconsin, on December 14th. So, tremendous results, great kids. I wanted to basically recognize the board. Moving on, I also invited Ed Robbins here to talk to you guys about some things he's doing in his classroom. It's really kind of cool. It's something that is new and has been used in some of his classes and I think you'll really enjoy it. So, Ed?
Great. So I've been using this technique or model for discussions called the Spider Web Discussion, which is kind of a model based off of the Harkness Method that was adapted by Wiggins. But basically, it stands for Synergetic, Practiced, Independent, Developed, Exploration, and Rubric. So this is kind of the model for this discussion in that the way it works is I assign students something to read or a podcast to listen to, or some chapters from a random book, or from some science books, I should say. And basically, I sit back and I let students lead the discussion. So I don't have anything to say in the discussion. I kind of step back and just let them take over the classroom. And it was really impactful for me in the fact that, kind of the way that I set it up was that I asked students to basically read or listen to whatever we were looking at and just write down two interesting facts, two questions they have, and two new ideas. Typically, when I do guided readings, I have very specific and explicit questions that I give to students and I say, "Look for these as you're reading" and answer them as you go. But with this method, I kind of backed off from that and said, "Just find these things in your reading." And kind of left, left the responsibility of the learning on the students rather than on me. And, and this is kind of what it looked like. So, within the discussion, this was the formative for one of my classes and this became the summative. And so basically, we practiced it off of the first couple of chapters. They discussed it in this format. And then the summative, they got a lot better at what they were discussing. And this is where the web part of the discussion part comes into, where students circled up. And basically, every time they made a comment or a question, I would draw a line from one person's name to whoever answered it or to whoever put another comment in there. And there's little notes along the sides of like, "Good insight, good question." Just little, little things for me to remember to go back and check in with those students and say, "Hey, that was a great comment that you had" or "A good idea that you helped bring to the discussion" and made it deeper and more meaningful. And then a little random notes on the side too, like, "We got to make sure that this, this got a little off, so we got to clarify a few of these little pieces here and there." But what I liked about it was that it helps, helps my students become better communicators. Just gets them practicing in a setting that they don't necessarily want to communicate in. And so it just kind of brings up those communication skills. It works extremely well with nearly any formative that I've done. Instead of me kind of going over the answers, we kind of, if I circle them up and have them discuss it, then it brings a little more of that ownership onto the students. And, oh, and the other part that I loved about it was the students would hit all of the main points that I was looking for. I didn't have to explicitly write, "Look for how protons affect the atomic number" or whatever we were reading about. I could just leave that up to the students and they would pick up those key ideas and would discuss them. So I didn't have to like spoon-feed them ideas of what they're looking for. They had, they had the important stuff and were able to discuss it together with one another. And it left, it shifted a lot of ownership of that learning from me onto the students. Because one thing I forgot to mention was the rubric for all of this is that every student gets the same grade with this, which is a little different in that we want it to be a group discussion. And so I tell them that beforehand, that we all need to read this together. We all need to work on this together because we're all going to be a team for this discussion. And so we're all going to come away with the same score because we want everyone to participate and everyone to be engaged in looking something like this where everyone's contributing to that discussion. And actually, I have two of my students here. What did you guys think? Took you out of the spot? You liked it? Oh, good. Great. Yeah?
Question. On, you said everybody had to participate. Did you get any surprises from any students that you were surprised that they did participate?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, there's, there were several students who don't really talk much in class, but when I put them in this format of me stepping away and letting them take over, they were, they gave some really good insights. And so it was nice to see them, kind of hear their voice and see them better engaged within that classroom setting. Is there a question?
That was my question.
Okay.
Draw out the quiet ones to get them to participate.
And I didn't have to like force them into it or like randomly point at them or anything. It was just them.
It's like a natural flow.
Yeah, a natural, like, responsibility of like, "I want to be a part of the team" kind of setting that we tried to create.
And this, both of these or one of these young ladies?
Both of them. I have one for chemistry and one for AP and RML.
What kind of reactions did you have? Tell me what you thought.
I, I like it because some students don't always do the homework and it makes them want to contribute and want to do their homework. And it's cool to see some kids who talk a lot, try to get other kids engaged, which I like.
Yeah, and like when we did it the first time on the protons and neutrons and all of that, like, they, I was stressed out because I care a lot about my grade. And so, I was like, okay, everyone better do their homework. And I was a little surprised that everyone did do their homework and like it worked really well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Very cool. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, let me just get switched over for one other quick figure. I also brought Andrew with me, so we're going to present. What's that?
In case you get stumped.
Pretty much. Yeah. There we go. Okay. So, um, so, when I was, when I was talking to the Personnel Committee, originally between being from Assistant Principal to Principal, one of my main goals for my time here was to make sure that the middle school, that there's a true middle school model going forward. So, some ideas here, we've had part of Trailhead. That's a big part of that, you know, fostering that model of a team environment. So, what we really looked at was schedule with that. So, over the years, when I first started here as Assistant Principal, 2015, our middle school model was that, really wasn't that a middle school model. It's more of a junior high model. Students followed basically a high school schedule. And so, in 2015 to 2017, there was a full year of Science and Social Studies in middle school. You know, electives were basically on a unified arts rotation so where every student had the same elective classes on a rotating basis. And we made a shift with the middle school team. A big part of the driving force of this, we looked at our assessment scores. And, what was it, 2A, Jen, correct? Board goal 2A, we're looking at how we can better our student achievement scores. But at that point, we saw that our STAR 360 scores were quite low in math and English. So with that, we decided to make a shift in our schedule to enhance those subjects, to try and bolster those scores so that our students were achieving at a higher level. So in that sense, what we did is we changed the curriculum, or not, excuse me, not the curriculum, but the, the schedule so that math and English had double of the curriculum time or the seat time, if you will. And then Science and Social Studies went to an every-other-day rotating basis for a year. And then we also were able to change our electives a little bit so that all of the students' schedules for middle school, their electives came in the end of the day and their core content time was in the morning. So, again, so the schedule we're on right now, as I said before, math and ELA are year-round, every day. And our Science and Social Studies are semester. So we made a shift with the middle school team this past summer to, instead of having Science and Social Studies on every other day for a year-long program, we decided to semester them. So, what we also put in place, and this is very targeted, we put labs in place. Now I say labs, we have a math lab and we have an ELA lab. What those are, are classes by our content teachers that are designed to do remediation. So if kids need extra help in those subjects, if they need extra time or extra support, those classes are in place to help bring those students back up to the achievement level we want back into in math and English. In order to make sure that we're reaching all of our students the way we want to reach them, is that we're constantly looking at schedule. Jen and I talk about schedule just about every day, about things, how we can improve things. So, with those plans or those labs in place right now, we are potentially looking down the line of how can we now enhance our middle school curriculum and content time by possibly adding in some more programming in Science and Social Studies? And so, these are, again, some of the things we're, we're looking at. But those labs are really a key part of that because, again, it gives kids who are having trouble in math and ELA that extra or double time, if you will. But also, by putting those labs in place, we have some time we could actually put some enhancements in place. So.
So I was going to talk a little bit about the curriculum element of things. I'm going to pass out two pieces right here. One provides an overview of the middle school social studies curriculum. The other provides an overview of the science curriculum. And by curriculum, I'm talking about the proficiencies of performance indicators, not necessarily the specific topics, et cetera, that would be covered. So just as a quick review, first off, I just want to draw attention to this first piece, that Mill River is pretty well-placed with regards to our development of performance indicators and proficiencies in that we have a K-12 set of these proficiencies, which is actually unlike most other districts across the state. Most districts have focused specifically at the 9-12 level and are now shifting to the K-12. Thankfully, the work that was done prior to my entrance here with Brooke and groups of teachers, they developed this K-12, which sets us up really well to make sure we have an aligned, coordinated curriculum, starting from the very beginning, leading all the way up to high school to ensure that students can meet our proficiency-based graduation requirements. And so, that, the reason I bring that to your attention is that we don't just have the high school piece, but we really have this the whole way. Still a lot of work to do on that, particularly with regards to crafting the teacher-specific learning targets for those courses. So this is the really 30,000-foot level piece of things, but within that, there's lots of things that can be covered and teachers provided the autonomy to kind of develop learning targets from those performance indicators in there. And that's an ongoing process. This is not, not work that is done. It's, we're always kind of trying to improve that. And ultimately, the goal of these proficiencies and performance indicators is to ensure that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum in all of our schools. So, really quick with the science curriculum piece of things. Again, at the K-8 level, this is kind of a continued work in progress. The last couple of years, we've been working with the elementary teachers at various grade levels to kind of build out those performance indicators and proficiencies. When I came on board, those weren't fully developed, so we tried to expand those out. And the work that we're doing right now is to really go a little bit deeper, to look at more at the learning target and topic level, to ensure that what is happening in our elementary schools is adequately preparing students to enter into middle school, that they have those skills that they need to work on. And one of those pieces are science practices. So if you're not familiar with the next-generation science standards, it's kind of three components of those standards. And we have several of those built into our Mill River proficiencies and performance indicators. But we're starting to look more at the practice piece of things that kind of extend beyond any sort of discipline. So it's more than just first science content or biology content. It's things such as being able to, you know, make an argument with information, unpack data, those sorts of things that transcend any particular domain of science. And so, we've been intentional to make sure that we're trying to get students to be prepared for the middle school piece, but that's still, again, work in progress because historically, at the elementary level, there hasn't been a major focus on science and social studies. So that's kind of work that we're continuing to do. With regards to social studies, with the adoption of the C-3 standards, our proficiencies and performance indicators are informed by those. And that's, again, another area that we're working on K-8 to make sure that what's happening, or I'm sorry, K-6, what's happening at the K-6 level is really helping to prepare students to do well in middle school. And that's another ongoing piece because, again, historically, social studies has not been a major focus. It's really been more on the ELA and math piece of things. So we're trying to create closer bridges between the elementary level and the middle school level. But again, going back to what Tyler was saying, is we recognize that, you know, we need to focus more on the science and social studies piece at the middle school level using the performance indicators and proficiencies that you have in front of you. Big focus, though content's important, I know I've talked about these transferable skills before. Not that these are necessarily more important than content, but they're at least equal to content because these, again, transcend any sort of content area. And so the middle school collaborated to decide that they're going to have their own kind of matriculation requirements, if you will, to kind of graduate eighth grade that's focused on these particular skills, which are also going to be touched upon in high school and are a component of our proficiency-based graduation requirements according to the educational quality standards. And so, this has kind of been an increasing focus at the middle school level to just generally prepare middle school students to do well in high school. So, kind of pulling all this together is, you know, that's how we're saying, middle school, kind of an ongoing kind of refinement to figure out what makes the most sense, to really create a solid bridge between what's happening in the elementary school and then what students are going to be experiencing at the high school level. So we just wanted to kind of provide you a little update of around where some of these pieces are at.
And before I get Adrian real quick, one thing to think about too is that the middle school being such a focus of everything we do here, Jen has been basically the leader of the middle school. She meets with the middle school team on a weekly basis, discussing all these things and really refining these ideas with them. So that it's not something that's just, hey, we need to do this. We're listening to our teachers who are right there with our kids and they're seeing the need for these things and we're really trying to work with them to make sure that they get what they need. Questions?
I had two questions. One, when you were talking about the math labs and the remediation portion of the middle school day, what are the kids that aren't in need of remediation doing?
It's not, those blocks, not every student is in a lab class. Those go up against some elective classes, art, tech classes, band course, that kind of thing, PE and health.
And the second question was, all of your, your planning and all that is 6 through 8 for middle school?
Yeah, so we're trying to have closer connections with the sixth-grade teachers and...
That was my question.
Yeah, because we don't want to just operate in our silos or trying to have better connections. So, again, that's an ongoing piece, is to talk, have the middle school teachers talking with sixth-grade teachers, vice versa, to inform their practices so that, again, we're creating a better kind of bridge.
Are they taking part in these weekly meetings or?
The sixth-grade teachers? Not that I know of. No.
Not at this point, but that is the plan. Once we get closer to where we are having those discussions of what those students are coming to us next year, they will be part of that discussion.
But let's be clear, that is not a part of an orchestrated plan.
I'm just saying, it's on, it's on the sheets.
I just want to say it out loud. It is not a part of a plan to bring sixth-grade students and teachers into this building. Just want to put that on the table.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so to clarify, the reason why, like, keep saying 6-8 is that's kind of how the proficiencies are written, the way the standards are written.
the proficiencies are written, the way that the stamps are written, they tend to group them because sixth grade tends to be considered middle school.
We can have a sixth-grade bridge year in individual schools, but they have to be involved.
Other questions?
I just have a question, which might be silly, but the graduation proficiencies are the middle, the middle school performance indicators are how you're working in middle school to achieve those?
That is correct.
That they have to achieve in order to graduate. They're not just double-checking.
And one other thing to add to that is, you know, in terms of to matriculate from middle school, you know, we're looking at transferable skills, but that is not to say that content is not assessed as well. It's both. But we're really looking at what those skills would make those students successful in grades nine and 12. But content's still there.
And then I guess another question would be, is the, the switch over between the social studies and the science to that semester-based? They are receiving the same instruction, just in a different format, because before they were getting every other day.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
It's George's clock.
I know, that's what I was just going to say. I did have one question. Is it possible that Ed Robbins could share his PowerPoint? He left, he left already, but I just realized that. But can we get the PowerPoint shared with us? That would be great.
Could you ask Ed Robbins to share his presentation with the board members?
I can do that, I have it.
Thank you. Great.
That would be wonderful.
Yes. Okay, so yes, the transact, other legal business.
Well, as part of my series of recognizing folks in our organization for outstanding work and dedication, what I'd like to have the minutes reflect is the group of folks that work would stand in our business office. And I know Doug can jump in there with me in terms of their dedication and help as he did earlier. They do an outstanding job as far as I can see and I think that we are extremely lucky to have that group with us. So Stan, would you pass that along, please? And would make sure that that's in the minutes. What's that? I missed that.
And that we all clapped.
And Stan has learned today, this afternoon, has learned if he ever gets locked up in his house or out of his house, he knows how to solve the problem. Is that right, Stan?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Communication.
Okay. Any other legal business we need? Okay. Agenda building. We will have...
It's the first meeting of the month, so we will be here. We'll have central office and principal reports as we normally do.
Okay. Anything else we need added to the agenda?
There will be a report from our policy group. And we'll see how it goes. Probably won't have anything for a first reading, but we might.
Will you have a budget?
Probably have, if it goes well, yes, I'll have...
We'll have had a...
Discussion of the budget.
Had a negotiation meeting right before, the negotiation committee.
True.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Anything else? I think that that's pretty cool. Okay. And my understanding is that we have the need for an executive session for a personnel matter, so could I have a motion to go into this?
So move.
Second?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
It is 7:33 and we'll be in executive session back in the conference room.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Brian, join us.
And Brian may join us, yes.